Good evening and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the City Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days, and any actions taken tonight on initial development plans, alternative plans, or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on the preliminary subdivision plan request tonight will be referred to the City Council for action at the third council meeting of this month, or at the first council meeting of next month if associated with a rezoning or major amendment. Any recommendations made on rezoning requests, major amendments, future land use amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held on the first three Tuesdays at 7:00 PM here in Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the Commission's consent agenda, planning staff and the Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the Shape Sioux Falls 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. By approving the consent agenda, the Commission is approving the items on consent. Therefore, upon approval of the agenda, those members of the public in attendance for those items are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on the item. Second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone and identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you please either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on CityLink and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Friday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Welcome to Carnegie Town Hall for this beautiful Wednesday evening for our Planning Commission meeting. Just to reiterate, I would encourage all of you to please silence your cellphones. It's nothing funnier than when they go off up here, but please do that for limited interruption. And also, we are interested in hearing your opinions on the items coming before us tonight, so any items you do wish to speak on, please limit your testimony to five minutes, and that'll be great. We look forward to hearing from you. We'll go ahead and get rolling here with our agenda items. Denise?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item one is approval of the August 2nd, 2017 minutes of the regular meeting. Item two is August Platts. Item three, 6725, 2017, rezoned from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density and O Office Districts to C N Conservation RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density LW Live Work and C4 Commercial Regional District located at the northeast corner of North Career Avenue and West Benson Road. Item four, 7098, 2017, rezoned from the I2 Heavy Industrial District to the REK Recreation District for Loud Forms located at 1210 North Weber Avenue. Item five, 7234, 2017, rezoned from the I1 Light Industrial District to the C N Conservation District for Loud Forms located east of Northwest Port Avenue and north of West 54th Street North. Item six, 7241, 2017, rezoned from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the S2 Institutional Campus Plan Unit Development for Loud Forms located at 2308, 2400, and 2412 South Summit Avenue. Item seven, 7270, 2017, rezoned from the C3 Commercial Community District to the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District for Loud Forms located at 2301 West 46th Street. Item eight, 7291, 2017, rezoned from the AG Agriculture District to the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban and RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density Districts for Loud Forms located at the northwest corner of West 41st Street and South Ellis Road. Item nine, 7292, 2017, rezoned from the AG Agriculture and I1 Light Industrial Districts to the I2 Heavy Industrial District for Loud Forms located at the southeast corner of East Benson Road and I229. Item 10, 7293, 2017, rezoned from the LW Live Work District to the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban District for Loud Forms located south of West 32nd Street and west of South Kinderhook Avenue. Item 11, 7295, 2017, rezoned from the C4 Commercial Regional District to the I1 Light Industrial District for Loud Forms located at the southwest corner of West Maple Street and Northwest Port Avenue. Item 12, 7299, 2017, rezoned from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional and RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density Districts to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District for Loud Forms located at the northwest corner of West 6th Street and South Minnesota Avenue. Item 13, 7307, 2017, rezoned from the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density and O Office Districts to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District for Loud Forms located at the southwest corner of West 4th Street and North Minnesota Avenue. Item 14, 7308, 2017, rezoned from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District for Loud Forms located at 2201 East 34th Street North. Item 15, 7020, 2017, Preliminary Subdivision Plan for Pinnacle Point Addition located at the northeast corner of West Benson Road and North Career Avenue. Item 16, 7315, 2017, Preliminary Subdivision Plan for Ulrich Farms Addition located north of West 41st Street and west of South Ellis Road.
Thank you, Denise. I'll lead off on the consent agenda. I've been informed that item number 14 has been withdrawn. Would there be anyone on the Commission that have any concerns with items 1 through 16, with the exception of 14 being on the consent agenda? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to see additional action on items 1 through 16 of the consent agenda?
Hi, Zach DeBoer. I came here originally for something else and was not aware of one of the items on the agenda or two would be items 12 and 13. Would it be possible to go to the renderings of the site plan for that? Just the image on item 12, Six in Minnesota?
Did you want those removed to the regular agenda?
Yes, if possible, yeah. Thank you. Okay, so we have a request to move items number 12 and 13 to the regular agenda. Is anyone else in the audience that would like to see any of the remaining consent agenda items moved to the regular agenda? Seeing none, look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
No made.
Got a motion and a second. At this time, I'd like to see a motion to move items number 12 and 13 and the withdrawal of number 14 from the agenda, or I'll rephrase. Motion to move items 12 and 13 to the regular agenda and the withdrawal of item number 14 from the consent agenda. Got a motion and a second for the amendment. Any discussion? All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. All right, items 12 and 13 will be moved to the regular agenda. 14 was being withdrawn, and I need a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Pardon me, Mr. Chair. Just need to vote as amended.
Sorry. I'll call for the vote as amended if there is no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. The amended consent agenda is approved. Denise? Oh, I need a motion to approve the regular agenda now.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor of approval of the regular agenda, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Denise?
Do you want to release the folks for those early items?
Oh, sure. Sorry, folks, I'm a little off my game tonight. If you're here for anything on the consent agenda, items 1 through 11, or 15 and 16, you're free to go at this time. We'll now proceed with item number 12.
Item 12, 7299, 2017, rezoned from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional and RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density Districts to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District for Loud Forms located at the northwest corner of West 6th Street and South Minnesota Avenue.
Jason Bieber representing Planning and Building Services. The applicant here is Carol Mueller. The owner is Murray Properties. The applicant is looking at rezoning roughly .40 acres from the RA1 Apartment Residential and RT1 Single Family Residential zoning districts to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District. They are looking at combining these properties with the existing key real estate building to the north and constructing an accessory parking lot for the Minnehaha County Courthouse. As indicated, it's located at the northwest corner of West 6th Street and South Minnesota Avenue. Setbacks, they will be required, the 10-foot front yard setbacks on Minnesota and 6th Street. They also will be required a Level A buffer yard along that west property line adjacent to any properties that are multi-family. The proposed zoning does meet the Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan. This section of South Minnesota Avenue, excuse me, contains several retail and institutional uses. Now, the proposed parking lot will help with the existing parking problems that the Minnehaha County Courthouse has. And finally, that Level A buffer yard along that west property line should help buffer this parking lot from the existing multifamily residential uses. If the rezoning is approved, the applicant can construct the accessory parking lot similar to the one as you see up here on the site plan. If the rezoning is denied, the parcel will continue to be zoned RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density and RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District. And this would allow a two-story apartment complex and/or a single-family residential home. Because the subject application is consistent with the Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, staff does recommend approval of this rezoning, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Thank you, Jason. Is the petitioner here this evening? Good evening.
Good morning, good afternoon, good evening actually by now. Carol Muller, Minnehaha County Commission Administrative Officer. Yes, as you know, we continue to grow and change at the county, and we look forward to being able to provide more parking, not only for our employees, but also for people who come to the county, i.e. jurors, people who are getting their license plate registered, all those type of things that go into it. Yes, so we are looking forward to being able to add more parking.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding item number 12?
Zach DeBoer. Again, I came here for a different reason, and so forgive me if I don't have all my facts straight. But that, yeah, sorry. That corner is a gateway to downtown. It's Six in Minnesota. There's a lot of heavy pedestrian traffic there. Is the best use for that section a parking lot? That's the least productive use for that space, just as overflow parking for the Minnehaha County building. I just feel like with the steps we're trying to take towards walkability and creating safer streets and a more active downtown, that a parcel like this that sits right on the edge of downtown, a stone's throw away from the old courthouse museum, right at the gateway of Uptown, that if we're using this empty parcel just for overflow parking, that's maybe not the wisest use of land. And I think it's maybe worth reconsidering what that use is. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Excuse me, Zach. Could you come back up to the podium, please?
So, Mr. DeBoer, what would you think should go there?
I mean, right now, it's an empty lot, is that right? And it's zoned currently for residential, for apartments? Is that correct? Sorry, I just want to make sure that I am saying the right things, that right now it's an empty parcel. I mean, apartments, apartments, I mean, if you wanted to have commercial, obviously you have the key, key building, something with a key, located right next door. It just feels like that's a gateway in between downtown and a neighborhood. And if we're just widening the street effectively by adding more parking spaces, that's somewhere where we could maybe put something that includes more housing, more opportunities for commercial. Imagine having a corner shop there where people can get their groceries or items. A parking lot is not very imaginative for land that is highly valuable in the downtown area. And act- area and acts as a connector between the Cathedral and Pettigrew Heights neighborhoods and downtown.
You know, a great way to see your vision there would be to make them an offer and then you can do what you want to with that land.
Well, unfortunately, I don't have that kind of money, but I think it kind of falls to you and the zoning commission to really see what is the best use for those spaces. And I don't think a parking lot is one. We have a lot of parking over there. That's just my thought. Thank you.
Any other questions? Very good. So anyone else in the audience that would like to speak regarding item number twelve? Seeing none, I will look for commission action.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I mean, the nice thing about the US is we have individual property rights and the people who own the land usually get to decide what they want to do with it. And in this instance, overflow parking for the Minnehaha County Administrative Building is what they're looking to do with it. It's also needed down there. If you've ever tried to park in that lot, it gets off full, so I'm going to support it.
Very good.
Mr. Chair? I also would like to kind of reinforce what Nick said, but beyond that, C-two is a good function for this. It is adjacent to a bunch of others. C-two makes for a pretty nice commercial corridor. Just because it's a parking lot in short term doesn't mean it can't be something else more dramatic or something else, as he describes in C-two, and someday in the future either as Minnehaha continues to change and as that corridor continues to change. So I see this C-two as being an improvement on the RA-one than it currently sits, and so that's why I'm going to vote in favor as well.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to vote similarly for the same reasons.
Thank you, Commissioner Paulson. Any other comments? All in favor of approval of item number twelve, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item number twelve is approved. Denise?
Item thirteen, seventy-three oh seven twenty seventeen, rezone from the RA one apartment residential low-density and O office districts to the C-two commercial neighborhood and streetcar district for loud forms located at the southwest corner of West Fourth Street and North Minnesota Avenue.
Good evening, Diane DeQuayre with Planning. This is just a couple blocks down from the project that we just spoke about. The applicant for this is John Meyer and Richard Price. It is located at the southwest corner of North Minnesota Avenue and West Fourth Street. They are looking to rezone a couple of different parcels there. For the most part, they're zoned as RA-one but also as office, and they are looking to zone that to C-two commercial, again, in another intersection. The applicant is proposing to rezone approximately point seven-four acres from the RA one apartment residential low-density and office districts to the C-two commercial streetcar and neighborhood district to provide an office building with residential on the second floor. A separate garage building will also be constructed on the north portion of the site. If this rezoning is approved, the applicant can combine the parcels and develop the office building with the dwelling above the first floor. If the zoning is denied, the parcel will continue to be zoned RA one apartment residential low-density and O office. Because the subject application is consistent with the Shapes Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, staff does recommend approval for this rezoning. I can answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Thank you Denise.
Diane.
Diane. Really off my game tonight. Is the applicant here this evening? Good evening, sir.
Good day. This particular parcel we've owned for several years and...
Real quick, would you mind just stating your name and address for the record, please?
Richard Price is the applicant on this particular property. We've owned it for several years, so we decided to finally do something with it. And we also got to put additional parking, then if you go to the site plan, you can see we have additional parking as well, which could overflow and help the police department over there or the county courthouse as well. So we just decided to do something with it currently.
No, very good. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? No, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding item number thirteen?
Hi. The reason I asked this be pulled somewhat relating to the previous one was that this is an urban streetcar corridor, this is a connection between downtown and the community surrounding it. Great to see some development happen there. I would ask or suggest that the applicant look at perhaps not locating that parking lot in the front and sides that face, sorry, where are we? Fourth, there we go, Minnesota and Fourth Street, that if that parking could be located perhaps in the back. That creates a better corridor for people walking, creates better sightlines, makes people feel safer when we have parking lots that abut wide streets. We now just have a lot, a lot, a lot of pavement, a lot of concrete, not a very safer inviting place to walk, and there's a lot of people who walk right there. And I think by kind of swapping the building and the parking lot, we could maybe avoid some of those problems and make that corner feel safer for pedestrians.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for Zach on item number thirteen? Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak regarding item number Seeing none, I will look for commission action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair? I think Zach had a good suggestion about potentially moving the building to a different location. However, this is not actually a site plan approval, this is a rezone, so I think the owner can take that under consideration and decide whether or not that's the appropriate move for the particular aspect that he's planning to put there. But ultimately, still C-two makes a lot of sense in this particular zone because it is reinforcing a significant C-two presence along Minnesota, and that still makes a lot of sense from a planning standpoint.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner Irvin. Any other comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of item number thirteen, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item number thirteen is approved.
Item seventeen, seventy-two forty-eight twenty seventeen, conditional use permit in the BCF one form to allow an office building without brick siding when adjacent to DD forms located at six thousand South Doral Avenue.
Thank you Denise.
Item seventeen is deferred.
Thank you Diane. Item number seventeen is deferred. Do we make official vote on that?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to defer item seventeen to the next regular Planning Commission meeting.
Second that.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor of the deferral of item number seventeen to our next regular commission meeting, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item number seventeen is deferred. Thank you.
Item eighteen, seventy-two sixty-eight twenty seventeen, conditional use permit for an off-premise sign located at thirty-three hundred North Potsdam Avenue.
Okay, the applicant for this is Carla Steele with CK Outdoor. The property is located at thirty-three hundred North Potsdam Avenue, where the applicant is requesting to replace an existing billboard with a new static billboard on the east side of the property. The new billboard will be forty-eight feet wide and fourteen feet tall. The overall height of it is forty feet. Due to the existing location of the billboard along the interstate, staff feels the replacement sign will not have a negative impact or visual pollution at its location. Staff feels that the replacement should not impact property values, traffic, and city utility services, and land use density. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Thank you. Thank you Diane. Is the applicant here this evening?
Hi, I'm Carla Steele with CK Outdoor. And like she said, we are just wanting to improve the structure and the visibility of the board, add some lights to the structure. Everything's in the plans, it's not going to be moved, it will be in the exact location.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding item number eighteen? Seeing none, I will look for commission action.
Motion for approval.
Motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of item number eighteen, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item eighteen is approved.
Item nineteen, seventy-three twenty twenty seventeen, conditional use permit in the RE-six form to allow for residential units on the first floor in the DT PUD located at seven-twenty-four, seven-twenty-nine North Main Avenue and one-oh-nine West Second Street.
The applicant is Erica Beck with Lloyd Companies. The property is located on the west side of North Phillips Avenue and south of West Second Street, where the applicant is requesting dwelling units on the first floor for residential uses in the downtown PUD and the RE-six form. The project will consist of two buildings. As you can see in the slide here, Building A along Phillips Avenue will have commercial on the first floor, but Building B located along Main and Second will have dwelling on the first floor to make up seventy-four units on four stories. South of Building A are the existing Phillips Avenue lofts that also have dwelling units on the first floor. With similar mixed-use development and dwelling units on the first floor, the conditional use permit is compatible and should not detract from the character of the area. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permits. I can answer any questions you have.
Diane, any questions for staff? Thank you. Is the applicant here this evening? Good evening.
Good evening, Erica Beck from Lloyd Companies. As Diane stated, this is a project in which we're proposing in the downtown location as part of the Uptown at Falls Park development area. I have a much larger presentation to go through with you and a couple of items here, but I just wanted to comment on a couple of things if I could. As Diane stated, again, we have two buildings that are proposed on the site, Building A and Building B. When we looked at what we would like to, you know, scope this project as we were preparing to respond to the city's RFP that was issued earlier this year, one of the things that we took into consideration was a number of different projects that we had toured in both the Des Moines and Minneapolis-St. Paul areas, in which they present very modern, unique lifestyle communities, and that's exactly what we want to create at this site as well. We feel that it's important to create as much density as possible when it comes to apartment homes in this area to help support more sustained commercial presence, and that's why we're proposing to incorporate commercial along Phillips Avenue and Building A, and then also have residential or apartment homes in both Building A and Building B. So the very north side, as that Building A wraps around Second Street, there will be six apartment homes on the first floor in that building, and then all of Building B will have apartment homes as well.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding item number nineteen? Evening, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Lee Looning. I'm resident in North Sioux Falls in Phillips Lofts. I've been there since the inception of the exchange. I'm a sculptor, the Sculpture Walk, and I've dealt with, we've got artwork right across from us, we've been involved with that. I'm a North Ender, lived above Koval Lake, and all this ground used to be my playground, except the Greenway, which was a Rust Way and Grease Way, and they had really big dogs. We never ventured in there in the sixties, but I'm a very huge advocate of downtown. And I am an actual artist in the artist loft, so that's kind of unique. My partner Sherry Treeby is here too. What I want to support is that that area is professionals and like me, empty nesters. The impact on the school district is pretty much nil with these kind of developments because they're either up and coming or they're getting out of their homes. They're freeing up other really nice real estate, and they're putting a very, very professional and safe and a community of people. And Lloyd's, which I really love about them, and I'm talking on my behalf, is they have, they make it a social area. They have events, they treat people like family, there's always something every month that brings people together. You don't find that most apartment complex, none actually. They move in, they move out, but there, people stay on, it's part of community. And I want to see it grow because I put artwork downtown, and as soon as Sue Steele leaves, that's my opinion, that strip is going to be crazy, very crazy, as far as development and the future of downtown. And the north end of Phillips is going to become the hottest part of downtown, thanks to a project like this, if you guys approve it. But that's my two cents, thank you.
Sure, just a moment, sir. Any questions for this? Nope, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak regarding item number
Good evening, sir. My name is Jason Muller, I'm a pastor with the Ransom Church at seven hundred North Main. Just wanted to speak about the property and the impact on us as a neighbor. Obviously, we are just west of this property and we're kind of excited about it, to be honest. What we're finding is going on is that when we actually researched trying to acquire that property, at one time, we, you know, it's quite contaminated and, you know, a lot of the soil is contaminated, and it wasn't going to be a very usable property for us. There was only about eight thousand square feet of dirt that was even available for us to expand what we're doing. Currently, we have about two thousand people attend our church on a regular basis every week. When we found out Lloyd's was going to be able to expand and look at their project, we were actually very excited because what we see in our neighborhood right now is after we acquired the building about five years ago, Good Sam put in a senior low-income housing, they put in Lloyd's property and the other apartment unit that was mentioned earlier, and what we're finding as a community of people who attend church is that people with no income, low income, and those who actually have income are coming together for worship, all at the same place, enjoying each other's company, being together with one purpose, one focus, and to worship. We're finding in that community that these things are really incredible, and with the opportunity of more people moving into the neighborhood, one of the projects that the church would like to work on, and we just started, was that we are going to start the North and East Neighborhood Association and really help the community come together as a whole. So that group, that Neighborhood Association will start at Sixth Street, run out just past Russell, and extend to Minnesota and over to the park. Our goal as a community and as a church is to get our neighbors to come together, regardless of the social or economic placements that they have in this world. Because we actually are seeing people who are coming from the Mission and Bishop Dudley and coming to church. We see people coming from both apartment buildings, and I'm sure that we're going to see more people coming together, as mentioned earlier by the gentleman before me, that this is going to be a great thing for our community, and it's going to be a great thing for us to come together. That makes our city great. So again, thank you for the opportunity to come up and share.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners? Appreciate your time, appreciate your... Appreciate your comments, thank you. Anyone else like to speak regarding item number 19? Seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
Mr. Chair, a move to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair. I mean, it seems like a logical spot for what they're doing there, and there's actually a lot of spots downtown where there are residential on the first floor, so I think it fits right in.
Thank you, Commissioner Serson. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I think the comments from the audience members were indicative of why this is a good project.
Thank you, Commissioner Paulson. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approval of item number 19, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign? Item 19 is approved.
Item 20, 7305, 2017, alternative site plan for buffer yard requirements located at 1320 South Minnesota Avenue.
So the applicant and owner here is Dan Brentrow with Cherry Tree Holdings. He was here in July for rezone application on the same site. The applicant is planning to use the existing building for offices and to modify the parking lot. The property is located on the east side of South Minnesota Avenue and north of West 22nd, where the applicant is requesting to leave the existing three-foot tall, you can see in some of these images here on the left, the three-foot tall retaining wall and a six-foot tall fence, and provide the required landscape units where adjacent to residential. Additionally, due to parking needs, the applicant is requesting a reduction in the buffer yard setbacks to accommodate parking because the subject application meets the intent of the buffer yard and landscape requirements with the shapes Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval of this application. I can answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, any questions for staff on item number 20? Thank you, Diane. Is the applicant here this evening?
Good evening, Dan Brentrow, 7420 Valleymore Circle.
Anything to add?
What's that?
Anything additional to add?
No, this is, I think Diane and I were joking like a pentathlon. It started with the Board of Historic Preservation in April with this body and then the City Council, and then we got a variance last month, and now we're back here for one last piece of the puzzle to finally be able to repave the parking lot. So look forward to being able to do that. Can I answer any questions if you have any concerns about it?
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Finish line, you're almost there.
What's that? Yeah.
Almost there.
We'll see.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding item number 20? Seeing none, I will look for commission action.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair. Kudos to you guys for your perseverance in getting things done and for working with the neighbors to make sure that your landscaping and everything wouldn't prohibit access to his garage, and I just, congratulations, good job.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approval of item number 20, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign? Item 20 is approved.
Item 21, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving the project boundary for tax increment Finance District 2017A.
Good evening, Commission. Dustin Powers with the Economic Development Division for the city of Sioux Falls. Tonight, we're here to address two items with you related to TIF increment financing application 2017A, also referred to as proposed TIF District Number 21. These items, the two items that we'll be addressing today is the boundary of the district and then also the project plan related to the, to the district. We'll be presenting both of those items together, so the presentation you'll see is related to both items 21 and 22. And staff will be recommending approval of both of these as we get through this. Let's see here. We wanted to give you a little background on just kind of the process of how we got to this application. The city issued an RFP in the spring of 2017. With that RFP, we were, there are three parcels, or four parcels that the city identified for redevelopment and are the remaining parcels that the city owns in the Uptown area. With that RFP, we received five proposals. One of those proposals was submitted by Lloyd Companies, and that is the proposal where this project is being brought forward to you tonight. A proposal we received from Lloyd Companies proposed redevelopment of the four parcels that the city offered up for redevelopment, as well as adjacent parcels to the west. After reviewing the proposal, all five proposals, the city's selection committee unanimously selected Lloyd Companies as the proposal, which is why we're here in front of you today. After the selection, we worked through negotiations with Lloyd Companies and identified that there is a need for a TIF, and then thus the reason we are here with the item tonight. So tonight's review is for, again, the boundary and the project plan for TIF 2017A. On this screen is the proposed boundary for TIF Number 21 and is the area that the TIF request is for and the area we'll be addressing here tonight. As part of the presentation we want to give to you tonight, we are going to ask Erica to actually, Erica Beck with Lloyd Companies, to actually come up and give the project overview and the request here as part of this presentation, and then I will return up here with the evaluation that staff did and our recommendation. So I'll call up Erica to go through the project description with you.
Good evening again. Erica Beck with Lloyd Companies. With me tonight is actually Craig Lloyd, our chairman of the board, Chris Sorkelson, our CEO, and then I believe we have a couple of additional staff members in the audience as well that I just wanted to point out. Again, like Dustin said, this item is in relation to a response that Lloyd Companies made earlier this year to an RFP that was issued by the city of Sioux Falls for redevelopment of city-owned land along Phillips Avenue. The property that, the project that we're proposing actually spans across not only the city-owned land on Phillips Avenue, but also adjacent land along Main Avenue as well. We utilized this rendering that's on the screen in front of you to try to give more of an overview as far as the context and geographic location of the project. We feel obviously that it's very important that this project reflects a good representation of our community, given that it's across from our city's namesake, Falls Park and Falls Park West. The focus of the development is to create a modern lifestyle community which provides access for our residents, customers, and commercial tenants to Class A amenities, ample parking, and sustainable commercial spaces. Again, very representative of the type of project that we want to see across from our city's namesake. We're attempting within the development, and as you'll see hopefully in the renderings to follow, to very strategically utilize both exterior and interior amenities, along with very strategically placed landscaping elements to create gathering spaces that meet the lifestyle demands of who we believe our residents and customers will be in this project. Historically, the land that our proposed project will sit on was part of a very large-scale cleanup effort initiated by the city of Sioux Falls and many stakeholders in the early 90s and probably actually before that as well. This cleanup effort led to the city working with the EPA, the South Dakota Department of Environmental and Natural Resources, and various other agencies to purchase land from private business owners for the purposes of conducting environmental cleanup and remediation efforts in the area, and which then led to a designation of the city's first Brownsfield site and the construction of the Phillips-to-the-Falls connection. I just wanted to point out, these articles actually came from a good friend of mine and many people in this room, mentor for a number of us actually. Steve Metley brought these articles to our offices, to my office, last year in September, and there were many more other than this. So ironically, we now have those in our possession and can read back through those, but many of these are dated in 1997 and even earlier as the city was entering those discussions with the EPA and some of those other state agencies, talking about how to actually clean this area up and create something that was more reflective of our community and what we wanted to see for that particular area of north downtown. This before-and-after picture, I think, is important. It reflects roughly 14 years and the difference that 14 years can make, along with a lot of investment and time by various agencies and business owners within the downtown area itself. As you can see from the aerial on the left, the railroad tracks had been removed at that point, but a lot of the salvage yard still remained, and a lot of the adjacent businesses had not yet undergone any sort of redevelopment. Picture on the right is just from last year and reflects more of what we see today. Ideally, in the future, if this project moves forward, you'll see even further development along Phillips Avenue, along with the city's further investment into Falls Park West with the addition of the Levitt Shell. As you can see from this rendering, we're showing, again, two buildings, as I've stated before. The building materials and the neutral color palette were chosen specifically to create a unique and modern, yet very complementary feel and look for the entire neighborhood. We wanted to be respectful of the development that had occurred to date, but also very respectful of the historic neighborhood that this building will be located in as well. As I stated before, we did tour a number of different apartment communities, very similar to this, mixed-use communities, very similar to this, in a number of different cities, one in which we're doing business in, which is the Des Moines Metro. There's a project that's very similar to the courtyard area specifically, and I'll touch on that in a little bit here, but we've been able to garner a lot of interesting, you know, characteristics for this project based upon the successes of those other projects that we've toured, which I think is important, but also gives us an opportunity to set up this development for future success and hopefully create something that the city of Sioux Falls and its citizens can be proud of along with us. Project details, Building A again runs along Phillips Avenue, and what we've tried to do with Building A is not only give the people that will be in the commercial spaces along Phillips Avenue, along with the residential homes along Phillips Avenue, a view of the park, but also as that building wraps around Second Street, we've created an angle so as to give those spaces, those residential homes, which will have decks extending out from the facade also, as much of a view of the park as well. Building A again will have roughly 18,000 to 20,000 square feet of commercial space on the main floor, and then it will also house 129 apartment homes. Building B is four stories and will house roughly 74 apartment homes. Outdoor spaces, I think that's very unique to this project, and again, one of those characteristics that we saw in a lot of other apartment communities that we toured in and around the region. We have 50,000 square feet of outdoor courtyard space with programmed amenities that will be featured in this development, along with a number of different patio and deck spaces as well for our residents and customers to enjoy. One of the aspects that we always look at when we approach downtown development is where are we going to park people? And we knew that we needed to provide enough parking within this development to support not only the apartment residents, but also the commercial tenants to the greatest degree as possible and not necessarily place all of that burden on the city's public parking system. So what we've done is we are proposing to excavate the entire site. We'll have roughly 98,000 square feet underground. That will include 260 underground parking spaces. We will also have 22 surface parking spaces near that courtyard area, and we will have 132 publicly owned angled-on-street parking spaces. So that's a total of 414 parking spaces. I believe 282 of those are privately controlled, and the rest, as I said, are owned publicly by the city of Sioux Falls. Not necessarily shown on this site plan because this was done when we first made our proposal, but what we've negotiated further with the city since making our proposal is that not only will be, will we be constructing angled parking adjacent to this project, but we'll also be constructing it on the east side of Phillips Avenue, along Falls Park West. All of Second Street will have angled parking and will all be reconstructed, for that matter. And then building, or across from Building B, on the opposite side of Main Avenue, on the west side, there will also be angled parking. Project schedule, just to kind of give you a little bit of an idea of our schedule and moving forward. First and foremost, assuming that this is approved by the Planning Commission tonight and moves forward to the City Council for consideration, which I believe is September 12th and the 19th, we would then start demolition of the existing buildings along Main Avenue and remediation of the site. So remediation meaning environmental work. Those historical photos that I had on the screen a couple of slides ago don't necessarily do justice to the amount of environmental challenges that exist on the site, but we have been working with a local environmental consultant, and they have been consulting with South Dakota DE and R to identify a remedial action plan that we then have to follow through with in order to clean the site enough for us to pursue development. That is all very timely in the sense that a lot of the dirt on the site has to be treated, and what can be treated and taken to the landfill has to be done before the dirt freezes. So we are pushing forward as quickly as possible to make sure that we can get that done before the ground freezes. Therefore, being in the ground, coming up out of the ground next spring and having a building open by March of 2019, that's our goal. We want to be open before the Levitt Shell opens, also in the spring of 2019, and really just create more of a vibrant, you know, atmosphere that, for that entire area of downtown. And just to, just to clarify, Building A is what we will be starting on first as far as it coming together and being completed in the spring of 2019. Following that, then we will begin work on Building B. Total project cost for both Building A and Building B, so everything that you saw in the rendering and then the site plan as well, is $43.5 million. Our request to the city for TIF, which has been approved by city staff, is $4.1 million. The current taxes that are being paid on that entire development, of course, the city-owned site, there are no taxes being paid, but for that entire development as it exists today, it's just over $8,200 in taxes that are being paid. Following project completion, that extends up to $455,000. The estimated term of the district as it exists today is 13 to 14 years to pay that, pay that off. Is this yours? If you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Otherwise, I think Dustin has a couple of slides that he would like to follow up with.
Commissioners, any questions at this point? Very good. Thank you, Erica.
Thank you, Commission. Now that Erica has shared the project, we want to identify and look at some of the TIF-related items that we're asking you to vote on today, both the TIF district, which has been shown, and then the TIF plan. And so what I wanted to do is kind of go through some of the planning considerations, or some of the considerations that we look at for every TIF application that we receive. And one of the first ones is some of those planning considerations. So when we look at the redevelopment of this site and the area that we're talking about, it is zoned in the downtown PUD. The mixed-use development that's been proposed with the residential uses is something that's allowed within that zoning district, and so we, there are no requests for any zoning changes as part of this project. We also look at the 2040 Shapes Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, as well as the 2025 Downtown Plan, and this request aligns with both of those plans that the city has established. Three main areas we evaluate as part of any TIF request are the project financials, the uses of those funds, are the TIF funds, and the public benefit that's received. And so I'll go through each one of those a little bit. After review of the project financials and the extraordinary costs that are associated with the development of the site, the environmental remediation, the demo of the blighted properties, there was a determination that there is a financial gap with this project that necessitated the request for the TIF. The primary uses for the TIF funding is the second thing that we look at, and with the extensive amount of environmental remediation and the public infrastructure improvements that are part of this project that Erica described, such as that angled parking and the reconstruction of Second Street, we, those are acceptable uses when you look at TIF funding. The third area is the benefits of the public receives as part of this project. And so cleaning up those blighted properties, adding additional on-street public parking, as well as those public infrastructure improvements we talked about are all items that are things that we look at and we believe are a benefit of this TIF project. The next thing that we look at is the TIF eligible expenses. This table is actually in the project plan that you received, and so it's an exact copy of that. As you can see by... As you can see by, um, the total of the, uh, project eligible, or TIF eligible expenses, it is five-point-five million dollars. If you look at the first two items, uh, listed there, uh, the demo of the blighted pla- properties, and then also the remediation of all the environmental, um, contamination that is on the property, that makes up ma- majority of this request. And so, and so that, uh, as Erica stated, their request is, uh, four-point-one million dollars. Staff is recommending that, uh, amount, um, to move forward. And so although there are the five-point-five million dollars of eligible expenses, it will be capped at the four-point-one that has, uh, that we will be bringing forward. Erica mentioned the impact that this project would have on the tax revenue that would be generated. Um, and so this is, uh, again, another table that's, uh, within the TIF plan, um, that just really breaks out and shows what that impact will be on the taxing entities as part of, um, going forward. So once this project is completed, uh, we will see, uh, increase of the taxes payable to four-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars, um, and those kind of shows the breakout of what, uh, what's there. Uh, when looking at TIF, there are two ways, um, that really make a TIF, uh, TIF eligible. Those two ways are economic development and blight, and only one is really required, um, to be eligible for TIF. But in this case, we believe that we meet both of those criteria. Economic development is pretty straightforward, um, in this project. It enhances and expands the economic development opportunity within the area, and we believe will create some spinoff development in that uptown area of downtown. The second is, the second way we look at that is the blight. Um, and when looking at the properties that are within the district, uh, there are buildings that are in a dilapidated state that will be removed, and there are properties that are underutilized, um, due to their, due to the, some of the constraints that they have. And so, um, for these reasons, we believe that this project meets both of those, uh, criteria of the economic development and blight standards for TIF eligibility. So once again, um, the request for you tonight is, um, both a, uh, item twenty-one, which is related to the boundary, and item twenty-two, which is related to the project plan. Um, staff is supporting both of these, um, items here tonight and would recommend approval. Just to, um, go through, uh, a couple of these items, we are asking, um, for two motions related to each item. Uh, so for item twenty-one, the boundary, we would ask for a motion to designate the boundary, um, for TIF Increment Finance District 2017A, and then we would need a motion to recommend approval to City Council. And the same for item twenty-two, uh, we'd ask for a motion to adopt the project plan, and then a motion to recommend approval. Um, one other item, uh, that, uh, isn't before you here tonight, but, uh, if this, uh, is approved here tonight, staff will be, uh, recommending again to City Council that we enter into a TIF agreement, TIF development agreement, uh, for up to that four-point-one million dollars, uh, that's being requested. So with that, um, I will be here, uh, to answer any questions, and, uh, the petitioner's here as well.
Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Dustin, the, so the TIF boundary includes the Ransom Church, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's, my guess is mostly because of the additional parking that's going to be on the street, um, but my question is, is the Ransom Church aware of that, and are they okay with it?
Yes, we do have a, a signed waiver from Ransom Church indicating that they're accepted being within the district.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Any other questions at this point? Thank you, Dustin. Is there anyone in the audience at this point that would like to speak regarding item number, items number twenty-one and twenty-two?
Good evening, for the record, George Hahn, third generation and lifelong resident of Sioux Falls, and an honorable competitor of my fellow Realtor Larry Lutke, who's very knowledgeable about taxation, and that's what I want to ask about. I looked with great care at the TIF, uh, proposed twenty-one. If I could guide you to page eight of that, where there is a spreadsheet which sets forth the taxable valuation year, estimated value, current taxes, the adjustment of point nine-three, uh, things of that nature, um, if you will go to the column that is second from the right that says increment taxes payable at a rate of point zero-two-one, that's not the current tax factor, it's more like point oh-two-four-five, and this is not set by the city, it's not set by any known deity, it is set by the taxing authorities of the school district, the city, and the county, with permission of and blessings of our assessors down at the county. Now, if we look at the mathematics here, the increment taxes payable at the artificially low rate of point oh-two-one, it is consistent against the increment value. But if we go all the way down to the twentieth year, it is still point zero-two-one. Now, I'm not a soothsayer, and I don't have a crystal ball, but I'll guarantee you, in twenty years, the tax factor is not going to be point zero-two-one, it's going to be closer to double that, or possibly half again as much as that. Our taxes are going to have to increase for a lot of reasons. I'm not going to play macroeconomist, but I have some qualifications in those areas. Now, I brought TIF to Sioux Falls in nineteen-ninety for the first time for a project downtown that was to be a Radisson branded hotel. Didn't work, we couldn't get permanent financing because of the Resolution Trust debacle. We pretty well wrote the rules with, uh, Dean Nielsen and Steve Metley. Those rules still apply. I did the initial spreadsheet like this on Lotus, I converted, or, uh, Lotus, and I converted it to Excel. I think this is an error, I think it's one that needs to be fixed. This was done by the city, I discussed it with Erica, and she is, I'll brag, the only other person in Sioux Falls that knows more about TIF than I presently do. So I think there's a mathematical error here, which would result in two benefits if corrected. Number one, the tax increment, the taxes paid as the value increments would be higher. They would go up more quickly, thereby potentially reducing the bond more quickly and paying it off sooner. And the sooner a TIF bond is paid back, the more flexibility we have over the longer term for other TIF projects. So I think this is a, a clerical mistake, shouldn't delay anything, and if anybody knows about what the problems are of remediating soil that has been frozen, I do. I've been involved in that in other parts of the country, and I wouldn't dream of getting my friend Greg Lloyd mad at me for delaying anything. It just is a correction that I think the city and the developer have to agree upon, possibly with some input from the assessment office. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Commissioners, okay. Anyone else like to speak regarding items twenty-one and twenty-two?
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. I didn't come up earlier on the other item about the project because I thoroughly support it. I think it's, it's about time, about ten years later than what was supposed to be there. Um, I'm a big supporter of free enterprise, big supporter. What does free enterprise mean? It means being able to do what you want to with a project with your money. I do not like corporate welfare. TIFs are corporate welfare. This is one of the reasons why Costco didn't want theirs and gave it back. It takes money away from public education. But let's say for a moment that I'm sitting in your chair, and I actually support TIFs, and I have to look at this. Well, let's look at this TIF. Number one, downtown property is very valuable right now and it's very hot. Uh, the mayor recently said on the Greg Belford Show, he wishes he would have invested ten years ago in downtown property because it's such a great investment. Does this TIF benefit the school district in any way by giving them a TIF? Nope. In fact, the school district just voted for a fifty-million-dollar opt-out, and they're now talking, they're going to build a new high school, at the, the end of the year, they're going to present plans for a new high school, which will cost us even more. This TIF takes money away from the school district to do this stuff. It doesn't benefit the county in any way. Um, they're, uh, fight crime and build jails, uh, this development doesn't help them in any way. Let's go to another matter, affordable housing. It's not affordable housing, it's regular apartments, probably more on the higher end of, uh, apartments. Um, you could correct me on that if you want to, I don't even see these as working-class apartments. So it doesn't help housing in any way. So we get down to one thing left, soil remediation, which is three-point-one million dollars with the demolition of the building, not four-point-one million. The city has had ten years to clean this property up, ten years to get EPA grants, ten years to find the money to clean this property and have it ready as a clean site to sell at a, a very, uh, a more of an amount than what I think we're selling at nine-hundred-thousand dollars. If they would have cleaned it up, they could have sold it for a lot more, and we could have washed our hands of all this and not ever have to give a TIF. Instead, we spent twenty-seven million dollars in federal money, and we never even moved the train tracks. So, what does this TIF benefit in any way, shape, or form, except the developer getting a tax rebate? That George Hahn has pointed out is not even correct. It doesn't. It doesn't benefit anybody in the public except them. It just takes four-point-one million dollars off the cost of their project that they get to put back in their pocket. Now, this has been going on for a while. TIFs are originally supposed to be used for some of the things I mentioned above, affordable housing, cleaning up sites, stuff like that. The city's had a practice since the Sanford Sports Complex of rewriting TIFs to fit projects. In fact, ironically, the person who wrote the Sanford TIF, Sports Complex TIF is the same person who's presenting this project tonight for the Lloyd Companies. The city has a, is, and what they're doing is, they write the TIFs to fit the projects instead of having a set criteria of saying, this is a set criteria for every single project that is, requires a TIF. Instead, the city rewrites the TIF for the project. So naturally, you guys go, well, the planning staff says it fits the criteria. Of course fits the criteria, they wrote the criteria to get it to fit there. Funny how that works. So, when you look at this, you know, you say you have to follow rules, and you have planning staff saying you should approve this and all that, you don't have to vote for it, you can vote against it, just like the City Council can vote against it. As I pointed out, there is zero benefit to the citizens of Sioux Falls. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions? All right. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak regarding items numbers twenty-one and twenty-two?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Joe Batchelor, president of downtown Sioux Falls. And, uh, I don't have any prepared remarks, per se, but, uh, in general, when you think about TIFs, they exist for projects like this. Uh, you know, you want to look at a criteria, if their, uh, project is, uh, blighted, or if it serves economic development, I would, would agree with city staff that this does meet both of those criteria. We have soil that is contaminated, uh, there are certain economics that have, uh, that, that are hard to overcome without a TIF. This project would not come forward but for, uh, TIF, and, um, I believe that it's a worthy project to, for, uh, downtown Sioux Falls. I would echo the comments that, uh, the public made before with the previous item for the conditional use permit, that this will add vibrancy to downtown. We're talking about two-hundred-plus dwelling units for downtown. This will bring the jobs-to-housing ratio for downtown more in alignment. Um, we need more residents downtown, this will help with that, this is going to help activate the street, uh, the street life on North Phillips Avenue, create, uh, that anchor, if you will, for North Phillips Avenue, something that will complement the Levitt Pavilion, or, excuse me, Levitt Shell, uh, nicely, uh, and plus, there's a public benefit that goes along with this by getting a hundred and thirty-plus, uh, on-street parking spaces. Uh, and that will certainly, uh, provide some, uh, much-needed parking for those who are going to be going to, um, the, uh, events at the Levitt Shell. So, um, in general, um, I, I don't know the, you know, I'm not going to speak to the specifics of this particular TIF, but to the concept of TIFs, that's, this is a project that wouldn't happen but for a TIF. This is why TIFs exist, that's why this financing mechanism was created. So, that, I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions? All right. Anyone else in the audience like to speak regarding items twenty-one and twenty-two? All right, seeing none at this point, I'll close the floor to public comment. And, uh, commissioners, any discussion at this point on items that were talked about?
We need a motion first.
Yep, um, I will get to that, I just wanted to maybe, um, we'll start with this, um, I'll look for a motion to designate the boundary of Tax Increment Finance District 2017A. So moved?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, uh, discussion. Mr. Chair? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'm, um, in favor of this for, um, reasons that, um, I believe are supported, uh, from my experience serving on a downtown twenty-five plan task force, uh, with regards to the objectives that were established with that, and secondly, um, in attending the orientation regarding, um, T I F, um, I felt that the criteria and the considerations presented there as a model, um, are very well fit with the application.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Searson?
Uh, Mr. Chair, yeah, the, I mean, the boundary, I think with the inclusion of the Ransom Church and their willingness to participate and the extra, uh, parking along the street, the boundary makes sense to me.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, real quick, Dustin, could you step back up for a moment, please? I just wanted to ask a question quick about, uh, Mr. Hahn's comment on the increment taxes payable rate, or, is what's here in the documentation, is this, what, what it is?
That's what we ran the, uh, uh, again, all of the things that are within this document are estimates based on what we know about the project today and what we believe the assessment and the assessment rate is today. Um, as, you know, this is still, the project itself is subject to the equalizations, um, appraisal of this project and evaluation, and then also if throughout the years of this, the tax, uh, the, the, the tax rate is increased or, or decreased in that matter, uh, you know, that will fluctuate. Ultimately, this is a four-point-one million dollar TIF request, and at no time will there be more funds contributed than, than those fourteen, four-point-one million dollars. So, um, again, the, the, this is a plan that establishes, uh, kind of the, the criteria and outlines that for you to review, um, but we are, um, knowledgeable that, you know, things will change as things move on, um, but the, the agreement that will be, um, brought forth to council will limit it to that four-point-one million dollars, subject to the, um, assessment valuations and the tax rates of Minnehaha County.
Appreciate that, Dustin, thank you for clarifying, these are projected estimates, so, very good. Mr. Chair?
What I think I heard was they took a very conservative, conservative look at it, and the thirteen to fourteen years is probably on the high side, and we could hopefully expect it to be better, so, appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion to designate the boundary of Tax Increment Finance District 2017A, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Motion, we'll call it twenty-one A passes. Twenty-one B will be a motion to recommend approval of Tax Increment Financing District 2017A.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve in a second, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of motion twenty-one B to recommend approval of Tax Increment Finance District 2017A, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. All right, twenty-one B passes. Moving on to item twenty-two as part, as part of this presentation, I'll look for a motion to adopt the project plan for-
For me, Mr. Chair? Uh, if I may read item twenty-two into, uh, record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Denise. Thought that had been done. Go ahead.
No, sir. Uh, item twenty-two is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving the project plan for Tax Increment Finance District 2017A.
Very good. Thank you, Denise. Thank you, Denise. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adopt the project plan for Tax Increment Finance District 2017A.
Removed.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to adopt project plan, the project plan for Tax Increment Finance District 2017A, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. All right, twenty-two A passes. Twenty-two B, a motion to recommend approval of the project plan for Tax Increment Finance District 2017A. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion on that item? Mr. Chair?
I have a lot of respect for the economic development staff, I think they've been very judicious in the TIFs they've brought us, so I take their recommendation to approve with high regard. Some of the comments we heard regarding TIF, to my knowledge, the TIF is part of state law, and they changed it not that long ago to allow for the economic development designation, which could allow for nearly anything to be included in TIF. So I, I mean, I think it fits the criteria, and I think there are benefits to the schools, the county, the city, because if not for TIF, no project gets built, there are no increased increases in taxes. When you have a project like this, the TIF gets approved, a project gets built, and we have this increase in taxes, and we can have hopefully a long-term benefit to the city, the school, the county.
I echo those comments. Commissioner, the fact that right now, there's eight thousand dollars worth of taxes, nothing done, nothing's been done for ten years, so there's only been eight thousand dollars worth of taxes for ten years. Where's a city going to get money, three hundred, three million dollars, to do the remediation? That's what remediation costs. They're going to have to raise taxes to do that, and are they going to be able to recoup the cost of an extra three million dollars for that land? So yes, to me, I agree that this is a great use of a TIF.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Thank you, gentlemen. At this point, all those in favor of twenty-two B, motion to recommend approval of the project plan for Tax Increment Finance District 2017A, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Twenty-two B has passed.
Item twenty-three, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the 2013 Shape Place zoning ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls.
The applicant for this is the City of Sioux Falls. This is to amend the design standards for the downtown planned unit development. The purpose of the amended document is to require buildings, parking, and open space to be compatible with the character of the district and fit in with surroundings, thereby reinforcing the visual quality of the area, preserving the property values, and supporting the tourism potential of downtown. When an applicant submits a final development plan for downtown PUD, staff will review the submitted submittal based upon conformance of the standards of the downtown PUD and the updated design standards. Do you have any question based on the information provided to you in the packets?
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Diane. Is there anyone in the audience? Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought you were going to call up the applicant.
You are the applicant.
The applicant supports this project. There was a study group that helped put this together, including the downtown group and stakeholders. So again, Diane kind of finalized this. What the City of Sioux Falls didn't have prior in the downtown PUD was a lot of the design standards, and so they were really able to bring these things forward into the standard, and so this will really help in future reviews. And then one of the other things that Diane's been working on is the previous project that you just looked at is going to be going under the this review. So the the project for the TIF will have this design review undertaken also. So if there's any questions for either the applicant or the staff, you're welcome to ask us.
Couldn't have said it any better myself. Any questions for the applicant commissioners? Thank you, sir. Now, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding item number Seeing none, I will look for commission action.
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion to approve in a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I anticipate if anybody was not in agreement with these, they would have been here, so I think that's a good sign.
Good point, thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor then of item number twenty-three, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item twenty-three has passed.
Mr. Chair, move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned. Have a great night, Sioux Falls.